Go ahead, go ahead. Y'all good? I mean, y'all, I can wait all day. All right. Uh, how y'all government folk doing? First of all, I just want to make sure that y'all good, y'all good. I'm gonna keep this as simple as possible, because I know that you guys have simple ears. So I'm gonna keep this as simple as possible. I just want to ask, why are we subject to such grand violence and oppression when we decide as the people that we want change? What happened to democracy? Or does that only apply to certain people? I think so. And then I'm just, I just want to say thank you to the dumbest, smartest people I know, because you've given young people something to care about, whereas most of us had nothing to care about in the past. And when young people care about something, they care with conviction, they care with passion. So get ready for everything that you know is the norm to be shaken. All of that is over. Just get used to it. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ramona Taylor Williams.
Oh, you had to say that, because I don't look like a Ramona, huh?
I'm gonna be good. First of all, I do want to acknowledge the body. And my name is Ramona Taylor Williams. I don't live in Ferguson, and nor do I live in St. Louis County. I live in the north side of St. Louis. And I moved to St. Louis in 2006, and as soon as I came off of 64, onto Van de Venter, and crossed Delmar, I knew that Delmar, immediately recognized that Delmar Street was the Mason-Dixon Line in Missouri. And I have been fighting that battle to bridge that ever since I laid and I came to this, to this area. This is not just a Ferguson issue. This is a regional issue. Every county, my husband is a contractor. Because I live in the north side of St. Louis, we don't have resources there. So we have, we are forced to come into the county to spend our dollars. But when my husband comes into the county, a 68-year-old gray-headed old geezer, he is repeatedly stopped for no reason. From one jurisdiction to one other jurisdiction. Y'all need to annex all these little towns, so that they can stop budgeting, so they can stop making their budgets and fulfilling their, and satisfying their budgets off of poor people. For the city of Ferguson, two-thirds of its budget to be, but to be, its revenues to come from poor people, the people that here in this office, and that I'm, I'm poor. I'll let everybody know I'm poor. But guess what? I'm not ignorant. And the people here this evening are not ignorant. And I want to say to every last one of you, you need to hang your head in shame. The disparity that exists in this region is something that I have never seen in my life, ever. I was introduced to abject racism when I came to St. Louis, and you need to hold your head in shame, because you're shameful.
Excuse me, say what? Come again, say what? You know I am, because that's why I was in line, because you had called the name.
I was just making sure.
Okay. Now, um, how is everybody doing today? Um, I, I came here, and I really want to point something out, you know, because the mayor, uh, in that Ferguson area said one thing, he said there's no racial divide. But check me out, check me out. I see two black people up here, and the rest of them, the rest, the eight other people are white. That's looked like a divide to me. You know what I'm saying? I'm just speaking on that. But, see, it, I'm gonna tell you one thing, it seems like, we wonder why, we, we get so mad, why you all are so mad that we're here doing this now. We're tired of the same stuff happening. I'm telling you, we're not gonna let it happen anymore. We've had the situations where people that, in, in my neighborhood want to try to be something, but they look, they have to be scared or nervous, or have to maneuver in a different way, because they don't look the way that they should to move in that neighborhood. See? And that kind of trips me out, because people like, uh, James Holmes, the dude who shot up the whole Batman movie theater? He looked like y'all! I should look out for people that look like y'all, saying y'all finna do some Batman stuff. How, how would you feel, you know, if a person said, "These are the next, this is the next Timothy McVeigh right here"? You know? How would you feel? You know what I'm saying? Every day that you live, you have to say, "Damn, I have, I have, I have a stigma that I have to look out for." All of you all, even your kids, because y'all kids aren't black, they white. So, they, if you look at them, they say, "Damn, okay, that could be the next person that shot up the Batman. He might, he might flip out and shoot up another college or something." See? But, but the same type of situations aren't looked at that in your eyes, because you know you have a privilege, and you're gonna pass. You, it doesn't matter to you all, but at least for my people in my community, we finna stand strong, y'all better look out.
After that, Anthony Shaheed. Okay, folks, if you love me, I can call the next five speakers. Anthony Shaheed, Phil Duval, Larry Bacter, Sally Backer, Tori Russell.
I told her, I told her to start the clock, because if they don't stop, your time is running out. I'm sorry.
So first of all, I want to thank the black youth here. There's no more business as usual. Look how red this board has got. You got the 12, well, look at it. You got the 12, no. The next thing, I'm asking this board here to make sure that this chief of police, we're on record now, y'all take a vote, talking to you too, y'all take a vote, you need to get him out of here. You got problems as long as he's in here, because the racist tone they have set here in this community, it's no more business as usual, here in the city of St. Louis. It's no more business as usual. And it's because of you black youth. I'm not gonna block you, because of y'all standing up the whole boardroom in this. So now we're asking President Putin to put his hands up. They have no reason to talk about what Putin is doing. Right here in Ferguson, y'all are ISIS to black people. You are the ISIS of black people. We want North Korea to know. We want China to know. We want the world to know in Ferguson, Missouri, that you're the ISIS of black people, while you're smiling about black people being shot down like dogs. This is a goddamn joke to you. This is funny to you. You have no problem with this, you dogging black folks. You treating us like dogs. We want the world to know. We want the world to know. We want the world to know how black people have been treated in America, while they're talking about human rights around the world. They're dogging black folks around the world. They're dogging black folks around the world. So I want y'all to understand, that right now, I want everybody up. Everybody up. Arrest Darren Wilson. That's how we close it out. I can hear you!
Shut down! We don't get it shut down! We don't get it shut down! We watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! We young, we strong, we watch it all night long! Brother Shaheed, we forgot one thing.
Yes, sir.
There's a minority inclusion bill for those who need work. The county executive has put it forward, Sister Hazel Irby has put it forward, and every one of you have voted against it. No jobs, no training, no way out, all you do is shoot us and think we're not gonna say anything else. It only took 17 people to stop the war on September 11th. I hope you tell Major League Baseball that you hope the Cardinals don't make it, because we have an October surprise.
Are you next? If she doesn't, she's not going, let him, because we're gonna keep him moving. My name is Sally Backer, and I am a resident of South St. Louis County. I used to live in North St. Louis County, but now we live in South. My daughter is here with us tonight to witness government in action. We came to talk about PC 17-14 out of South Hills subdivision. In light of tonight's activities, I would like to request that this whole decision about the planned environment unit be tabled, so that a traffic study could be done on Tesson Ferry Road, Wells Road, and a deeper study of Mr. Stanger's involvement with McBride and Sons and their attorney, John King. I know that political donations are given on a regular basis, I just wonder if the timing of some of those donations wasn't convenient. It was difficult for me to do a search of a cor- a corroboration between donations that were made to Mr. Stanger and projects that were asked for and granted by the county to McBride and Sons and their attorney, John King. I am really pleased to see such a wonderful turnout tonight, to see government in action. It is embarrassing to me as a citizen that it has come to this point. I pray that all of you will listen to the citizens who have voted you into office. You represent all of us, and we all have concerns, big and small. Thank you for your service, have a good night.
Jen, Jen? Yes, ma'am? Do we have more speakers? We have, uh, five more total. Would you call the rest of them? Yes. Okay. The last speakers will be Pastor Ewing, Pastor Lee, Beverly Jones, and Brenda Reddick.
My name's Tori Russell, and I'm with Hands Up United. So we gonna start with this. You get half, you get a partial, you get a small bit of credit for speaking up. I want to know duly, in Irby, are you gonna file this motion to remove Chief Bellmore? Can you do that? Because I want to know, you've been here for a while, are we filing motions, are we doing something to get these people out of here, who sent the tear gas out, who was backed by the National Guard? Let's start third. Then second, that's McCullough boy. What's that say? He a racist. Birds of a feather flock together. I just, I just, I just want to know, this, this is my point, we respected everybody who came up. You talking about your water issue, you talking about your highway issue, we respected that. Are you gonna come out and protest with us? Not speak on this mic, come out and protest with us. So I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know where we gonna go with this. I know one thing, though, it's not gonna be a fun day, Sunday, at your beautiful Rams game, at your beautiful Ballpark Village, and at your Cartlins game. It won't be a nice day driving home. It won't be a nice day at your local grocery store. We'll be there, and not just you, all of you, because you had enough time to do something, you chose to do nothing. I respect no one. I respect no one. If we're not gonna get him out, then we have to find someone else to vote for. I don't care about no time, because we went over and over again. So we're just gonna talk about, you know, we're gonna shut down Clayton this week, we going to the city, we bringing these hood guys. We want, I'm one of those outside agitators that you hate to see, one of those Harriet Tubman types, who not afraid to break the law, because it's right morally, you cannot turn away from this, this is real life. You say, I know you guys are saying, "Let's get back to normal." Normal got people killed every 28 hours. I want me a new normal. So to everybody watching on that lens in South Africa that's sitting in this text, so to South Africa, to Switzerland, to Brazil, to London, we here with y'all. We woke up, and we not going home for nothing. We ain't got nothing to do, y'all ain't had enough initiatives to give nobody no job, so we ain't got nothing to do but be here in your face every day. All these folks are in the door for shit no more. I'm voting everybody in, my family votes all the time, this my chief vote, I vote. What else do you have to do?
This is what democracy looks like. Show me what democracy looks like. This is what democracy looks like.
My name, my name is Rick Isturman. I'm a resident of Sam Page's district. I helped Sam Page get elected many times, and I've walked with him, he is my friend. I am his friend. I've been in Steve Stanger's house, and I watched him get elected. But I have questions. So I have questions for you. You're my representative, so these are the questions that have come out of this last few weeks. Why is St. Louis County having Humvees, vehicles of war on the streets? Why aren't there community relations people in the county working with the community people? Sam, you need to ask, ask and answer that question for people like me. Sam, you also need to tell me, where is the community development? Where are people like M. Slice, Ramona Taylor Williams stood up here and we're working with her through our Holy Ground Community Collaborative, where we're working with her for two years, and we're trying to develop responsible places in the county, to bring the county out of the, the, the stigma that we're in. It's embarrassing to look on the TV, Sam, and to see my home city that I was born and raised in, all over the world, people looking at me and asking me, "You come from St. Louis?" My daughter was very upset, because they made fun of her and said, "Sam," she was, she was crying to me, and she was asking me, "What happened to St. Louis?" So please, please answer these questions for my daughter, for me, for the residents of your community, and find out, and see what we can do to put M. Slice and community development associations like that in place to stop this, so that we don't Google and find out that, that Wadu shows up, that people in Wadu are 1,600 times African-Americans, are 1,600 times more likely to get arrested than white people in the city of Wadu. It's on the internet, it's in a study. I want to know if that's true, and are we doing something about it? So please, Sam, help me understand what's going on here. Thank you.
I'm Pastor Charles Ewing, I'm Michael Brown's uncle. I, I'm gonna try to be brief. Exactly 20 years ago in 1974, our home was next to Jennings, Missouri, which is in the county. My sister and I was going to a store in Jennings, a white police officer pulled us over, I had all of my credentials. He checked my license, and he claimed that my identification tag was illegally affixed on my car. My sister had her driver's license. He handcuffed me, told my sister to walk home, took me to jail, and towed my car. This was 40 years ago. You talking about racial profiling. Now, I want all of you that's on this board, search your conscience. We say we are one nation under God. We say indivisible. We, we, we say we, we reverence the Constitution of America. Now, some of us, some of you, you go to your cathedrals, your masses, you go to your churches, you go to your synagogues. Now, this is the word of God that I want to share right quick. Psalms 37:1 says, "Fret not thyself because of evil doers; neither be thy enemies against the workers of iniquity, for they shall soon be cut down like the grass, and wither as the green earth." He also say, uh, the seven, the six verses, that he shall bring forth thy righteousness at the light, and judgment as the noonday. We got to stand before a righteous judge. I don't care if you can go to all your confessions, but we, the Bible says, "Every man must stand before the judgment seat of Jesus Christ," and we got to give him account for what we have done in his body. Judgment shall be served. If you try to cover over, try to camouflage, try to make the, the Bible says also in Isaiah, "Woe unto them that are calling evil good, and good evil." And when you, you, the lawmakers, try to say that this man, evil is good, woe unto you.
My name is Pastor Carlton Lee, I represent the Flood Christian Church and the National Action Network Ferguson-St. Louis chapter. 38 days, 912 hours, and still counting, since the day that Michael Brown was murdered with his hands up, and there's still no arrest. We have a war criminal that is on the loose. I want to identify three of them. Number one, Chief Jackson, for inciting a riot by releasing a videotape that accuses Michael Brown of a strong-arm robbery. Then lying about it, Chief Bellmore, for approving the use of tear gas, which is a chemical agent, according to the Geneva Convention, that they approved in the United States was there in 1993. And then also, let's call for Officer Darren Wilson, for committing a war crime in shooting someone with his hands up, which is known as a war crime all over the country, all over the world, it is identified through the Geneva Convention. With that being said, we have three criminals that are on the loose. And now my question to this county council is, what are we gonna do? And since the young man quoted, uh, he said, he said, "What are you guys waiting on for Jesus to come?" Since he said that, "Let me give you the word of God," Matthew 11:12 says, "And from the days of John the Baptist until now, the kingdom of heaven suffered violence, and the violent taken by force." So I close with this, arrest them now, Shaheed, arrest them now, arrest them now!
One of the, it's a couple things that I need for everyone to understand. You don't, I am not a young person, I am an old person, I am a baby born. And the same things that these young- And the same things that these young people are fighting for and that I am standing with them 100% happens to me on a regular basis. I have a master's degree. I did everything that people said that I should do to make it in society and to become a productive member of this society. I vote, I will vote on trash can colors. If that's what y'all got on the ballot, that's what I'ma vote on. Okay? So, but the thing is, is that I remember being a teenager, going to Normandy Senior High, graduating in class of 81 and being afraid to drive around in North County. We had to walk everywhere we wanted to go, okay? Because we always got stopped for one thing or another, or something, or this, or that. And it does not make sense that my daughter still has to suffer with that right now. It doesn't make sense. Because I did teach my daughter to do the right thing. She does not have a felony conviction like so many other boys and girls. This is not, people keep saying, well, this is not a color issue. Well, hmm, when we look at the statistics, it, it, it basically proves that it is a color issue. Okay, so, am I a racist? I'm not a racist. I got plenty of white friends. But see, the thing about it is, I have to keep them grouped together, just like you keep me grouped together. Okay? So, since I ain't set apart, then that means no one else should be set apart either. Then, this, this is not just a young man issue, because clearly, I'm a female, okay? And I get stopped. I mean, I was going down West Floss and just going to my mother-in-law's house and the police did a U-turn to come stop me. For what? I wasn't speeding. I had on my seatbelt. I got insurance on my car, not my car, my cars, okay? And when he, when he, okay? When he stopped me, when he first approached my vehicle, it was, "How you doing ma'am? Do you know why I stopped you?" Uh, no, I don't. Why you stopping me? Okay, well, I, I, uh, ran, I ran your license plate and this, those license plates don't go to this car. Little did he not know that I had the transfer slip in the glove compartment. So, yeah, them plates do go to this car. But I'm, I'm saying all that to say, it's as a 51-year-old African-American female in St. Louis. No, I don't live in Ferguson no more. I live in North St. Louis now. But this is a St. Louis issue. We fighting a St. Louis issue. And you know, this thing happens all across the country. It ain't about, it ain't just about St. Louis. It's just fortunate that since we in the middle, we might as well take what's in the middle and spread it from east to west, north to south.
I just, I just wanna say, you know, as a citizen of this country, and I have children that live in Ferguson, and as a grandmother, as a mother, my heart goes out to the Michael Brown family. And I want to know, is this county council are going to seek justice? Are you all with us? You've heard all the, you've heard everything the people have had to say. We're asking for fairness. We're asking for justice. And we're saying that if we don't get it, we can get it at the ballot box, Mrs. Stinger. Because we do not want you or anyone associated with McCullough to be in office. You dis, you disrespected Charlie Dooley when you ran for office. So, we know where you stand. We know where you stand. But all of you all, where are, where is the justice? Where is the healing? Where, where is, what is coming to the black community to? We want justice. Darren Wilson was removed from the Jennings Police Department and he did not even pass the St. Louis County test because of a background check. Now, he's in Ferguson. And we are asking for simple justice. We want fairness. We need a civilian oversight review board for the county, for the city. We also need you all to acknowledge the, all the online petitions to have McCullough removed from this case. And we're asking, what are you all going to do? Is it gonna be lip service? Or are you going to speak to the people of St. Louis County, Ferguson in particular? Or is it gonna be business as usual? Because we do have the power to remove, all of you all are elected officials and we do have the power to remove you all. And we're asking you, Stinger, to tell your friend, your BFF, McCullough, to recuse himself from prosecution. And we're asking you to give us an answer by noon tomorrow. And we're asking everybody here, use your voice and do not put this man in office. November is election. Use your, use your voice. You have, use it and remove this, so this man does not get a ticket.
My name is Minister Gary Hill, again. And what I'm saying is that we want justice. The system have taken the authority of the parents out of their hands and now you arrest the parents for chastising their kids. You have arrested pedophiles for touching a child the wrong way. Now, you have a police officer who have taken the life of an unarmed child, who haven't had a chance to live his adult life and the officer is still not locked up. Mr. Stinger. You saying you want to become the county executive, right? What plans do you have for the healing process for the North County residents? What is available to offer to let the community know you are working to rebuild trust in the North County? Mr. Stinger, you're, you're running for county executive. What is your plan to ensure the type of situation where young people are targeted will not occur again on your watch? Mr. Stinger, you have a choice. Either our community is voting for Mike Brown as a right-hand candidate or we will be supporting a comprehensive plan designed specifically for North St. Louis County. This is your choice. We have kids who are hopeless. We have people that have lost their jobs, apartments, and now are trying to get situation where every young person can strive without being targeted or disrespected, author, disrespected by authority, including the St. Louis Police Department. I need to know what your plan is by October 12th. The entire community of Ferguson needs to know what your commitments are to our community. Thank you.
That will conclude the public forum. We will move to introduction of bills.
Bill number 211, introduced by Councilmember Herbie. An ordinance authorized the county executive to accept grants totaling up to $157,675 from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development for support programs and services related to workforce development. As needed appropriate, said money is sent forth herein and authorized the county executive to execute necessary contracts or other documents.
Mr. Chair. Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember O'Mara. Bill number 69, introduced by Councilmember Herbie.
Please hold.
Bill number 118, introduced by Councilmember Herbie. Number 123, introduced by Councilmember Herbie. Bill number 207, introduced by Councilmember Herbie.
I move to perfect bill number 207. All favor. That's number 207. Move to perfect bill 207. All favor. All, ayes have it.
Bill number 208, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
She said 208?
208.
208. 208.
Before we get out of the perfection of our business, I wanna try to advance something with Hazel's back.
I move to perfect 208. Number 28, I moved it second it, to perfect 208.
Okay.
All favor.
Aye.
All ayes have it.
Bill number 209, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I take it up. I move perfection of bill number 209.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
All ayes have it.
Bill number 210, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move to perfect bill number 210.
All favor.
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Final passage of the.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I think we have a motion.
Hold on for the, we have to wait for Hazel to get to return back in, cause I've got a, a motion to expedite a bill and we need Hazel to advance it.
210?
Yeah, we need all so, it's, it's, uh.
Should be right back. Yeah, we can. I'm gonna move on to final passage and we'll revert back to perfection in a moment. We'll move on to final passage right now.
Bill number 330, introduced by Councilmember Bracke.
Please hold.
Bill number 330 is held. Bill number 202.
Bill number 202, introduced by Councilmember Quinn.
I take it up. I move final passage of bill number 202.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herbie. Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chair, on bill number 202, we have six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 203.
Move to, move for final passage, bill number 203.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herbie, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Mr. Vice Chair, on bill number 203, we have six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 203 is finally passed.
Bill number 204, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I move for final passage of bill number 204.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Herbie.
That's, uh, 204.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger. Councilmember O'Mara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 204, we have six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 204 is finally passed.
Bill number 205, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for final passage, bill number 205. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Herbie.
Steve, are you going to move it forward?
I, I, I did, I, yes.
Oh, okay. Um, I abstain because I don't know enough about it to, to vote. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Mara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 205, we have five ayes, one absent, and one abstaining.
Bill number 205 is finally passed.
I move.
Bill number 206, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
Move for final passage, bill number 206. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Herbie.
Abstain.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger, Councilmember O'Mara.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger, on bill 206.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara was an aye. Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 206, there are six ayes and one abstaining.
206 is finally passed.
Madam, Madam Chair, may I ask to revert back to the perfection order of business? I'd like to try to advance, uh, bill number 214.
I'm sorry for the record, is the motion to suspend the rules to return to perfection order of business?
Yeah, if I could move to suspend the rules in order to return to the perfection order of business and then to advance bill number 214 to the perfection order of business. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Uh, please read bill number 214 for perfection.
Bill number 214, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move to perfection of bill number 214. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Motion carries. Bill number 214 is perfected.
Excuse me. And then, uh, I also move to suspend the rules in order to advance, if we could, well, I move the, I move to suspend the rules in order to return to the, to the, uh, final passage order of business and to advance bill number 214 to the final passage order of business. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Ayes have it. Motion carries.
Please read bill number 214 for final passage.
Bill number 214, introduced by Councilmember Stanger.
I move for final passage of bill number 214. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Herbie.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Mara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Stanger.
Aye.
Councilmember Quinn.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 214, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 214 is finally passed.
Madam Chair, we have no resolutions this evening, so we'll move on to unfinished business under our. Madam Chair, we have no resolutions this evening, so we'll move on to unfinished business under unfinished business. Item number one.
Hold on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wait a minute, yeah. Drop from the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number two.
Drop from the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number three, fourth district.
Hold please.
So ordered.
Item number four, fifth district.
Please hold.
So ordered.
Item number five, fifth district.
Please hold.
So ordered.
And Madam Chair, we have one prepared order under new business this evening.
Adoption order number one.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Order number one is adopted.
Move adjourned.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Leading is adjourned.